Okay. Good evening and welcome to the July 8th meeting of the governing body. I call the meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilman Miller, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate you. Today I have the great honor of introducing my man Jonathan Sublett. He is the executive director of SINT Incorporated. He leads this nonprofit organization working to boost community development through mental health, housing, education, and wellness programs. Under his leadership, SINT is projected to reach 2.5 million in revenue for 2025 and has led the successful development of 29 affordable housing units and the launch of key community projects, including SINT Prep Academy, the South Side Feeling Station, and the South Side Wellness Clinic. To everyone, Jonathan Sublett.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. And one of the hardest things to do as a leader, whether in our homes, on our jobs, or in our community, is to continue to move forward when our hearts are heavy. Right now, there are so many among us who are struggling, who are going without, those who are impacted by decisions made outside of their sphere of influence. As leaders, we look upon these situations. We feel their impact. We mourn with those who mourn. We hurt with those who hurt. And still, we're called to offer hope. We're called to let them know that tomorrow still has possibility. As we come together, Father, it's easy to be distracted by all that's happening that we seem unable to influence, all that's happening that seems to go counter to what we believe it should be, all that's happening that hurts those whom we love. And yet and still, we're called to show what you've endowed in each of us, the power to encourage one another, to support one another, to sacrifice for one another, because that rises above all the disappointments. Time and time again, you place us in the lives of one another so that we can carry one another when we are too weak to walk for ourselves. During this time, Father, we ask that you will give us wisdom in where to place our resources, our time, our talents, our finances, so that we may see your will for our city come about, so that those who are hurting know that they are not alone, so that even in our mistakes and our disappointments, we see the value endowed in each and every individual, not because of what we believe, not because of how we live, but because we are made in the image of an infinite and holy God. We pray these things in your darling son, Jesus' name and the power of your Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First down the agenda, Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll, please.
Okay. Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers, Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akla.
Here.
Ortiz.
Banks.
Here.
Kel. Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
Okay. We have eight present with councilmembers Ortiz and Kel absent.
All right. We'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk.
For appointments, A, we have a board appointment recommending the appointment of Lindsey Freeman to the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board for a term ending July 11th, 2027. And then we have B for a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Joy Grimes to the Shawnee County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board for an unexpired term ending July 14th, 2028.
Okay. We've heard the appointments. It's read. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Banks and seconded by Councilman Miller. Are we ready to vote, or do we need to do a roll call since we have some people on Zoom?
You said that there was a motion from Banks first and then Miller.
Yeah. He spoke out quicker than I could see.
Okay.
See the flashing sign, the flashing sign.
Okay. So do we want to go ahead and keep it as first motion will be from Miller and then to Banks?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right.
Kind of get a quicker finger.
Go ahead and take a toll. And Councilmember Valdivia Akla, what is your vote?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And Banks?
Councilman Banks, your vote hasn't counted.
Okay, we have eight yes. The motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Even though those appointments are not here today, I still would like to ask for a round of applause to acknowledge their willingness to serve the city in this capacity. So if I could have a round of applause. Madam Clerk, presentations.
The first presentation will be the Gage Park Improvement Authority 2024 Annual Report.
Okay. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body. Keith Wardo with the Gage Park Improvement Authority will lead us through this item.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Keith Wardo, Chairman of the Gage Park Improvement Authority. I'm here with Tammy Cortez, who is also a board member of the authority and our Secretary of Treasure. We're here to present the 2024 Annual Report for the Gage Park Improvement Authority and answer any questions you might have. I might just start off with refreshing everybody's memories relative to the Gage Park Improvement Authority. In November of 2022, the Shawnee County citizens approved a sales tax which was to be devoted to the betterment of Gage Park. We stood up the authority kind of the first quarter, second quarter of 2023, and have since that time been putting in processes and procedures to strengthen the authority. So some of the things that have been put into place, we're meeting monthly, posting all of our agendas. We are having a financial review done on an annual basis. We did that this year by a local accounting firm and had no errors and had good results on the management of the finances. We are also, as of this month, contracting with another accounting firm, a local accounting firm, to do the financial administration for the authority. We think that's a good idea. Number one, everybody on the authority is a volunteer and there's a burden involved with the financial aspect of it. Number two, as we roll off the authority, it makes sense to have continuity through a local accounting firm. So those things have been put into place. With that, we stand for any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Questions from the council? Well, it doesn't seem like there are any, but I have to admit that I've been out there a couple of times for different events, and it's really pleasing to see the changes that are going on out there, and the attendance seems like it just continues to increase. So everything that you're doing, the foundation to support the improvements there, I appreciate it as well as the rest of the governing body. Thank you for your report. Okay. Madam Clerk, second presentation.
Our next presentation will be the All Hands on Deck Campaign to End Chronic Homelessness.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Brett Martin and Barry Fieker with Compassion Strategies will lead us to the side, and we'll also have housing staff available as well to answer questions while they are coming up. I just would like to point out, I'm very excited about this initiative, given that one of our FY 2025 strategic goals is to implement either one-stop shop, tiny home community, or low-barrier shelter. So this one's going to address part of that goal for the year. Thank you, Mayor.
Brett, Barry, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council, City Manager. Brett Martin with United Way, Chairman of the All Hands on Deck Campaign, is going to start us out tonight and give you a brief kind of update where things are.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, thanks for the opportunity to share with you this evening. The last time we addressed to you was during a joint session of the council and the county commission in October of 2024. Much has transpired since then, and we are happy to share with you the progress that we have made as the All Hands on Deck Campaign to End Chronic Homelessness. So just a reminder of the work that we have undertaken as a multi-sector coalition, the recommendations that had come through the community engagement process that were brought before this body in May of 2024 were the establishment of a one-stop homeless resource center, a safe rest shelter, or a so-called low-barrier shelter, and the establishment of a permanent tiny home village. Those are the priorities that we have undertaken as a coalition to move forward as our goal of ending chronic homelessness, chronic homelessness in Topeka and Shawnee County by 2030. Where we want to focus, the lion's share of our efforts is in this graphic that you see. This is the work that we have undertaken over the last several months. When I'm talking about us, I'm talking about the chairs, or excuse me, the chair, myself and the coaches, Barry Fieker as project consultant, Carrie Higgins with the City of Topeka, Courtney Barr with Topeka Rescue Mission, Jenny Falk with MAP and Compassion Strategies. So as we talk about this work, we recognize that while there are three priorities, there is a significant amount of work that is going to be needed in order for us to make progress on this goal. And so what we're talking about here is we're talking about the establishment, really, of a housing and homelessness solutions network in order to be able to end chronic homelessness in our community. And it really begins with outreach. If we don't get outreach right, it doesn't matter what type of one-stop homeless resource center we have, it doesn't matter the resources that are available there, it doesn't matter if we establish a permanent tiny home village, it doesn't matter if we have a safe rest shelter. If we do not establish relationships and trust with individuals who are experiencing homelessness in our community, if we don't get that right, then the rest is really a moot point. And so it begins with this multidisciplinary outreach team. That said, we do have outreach teams that are deployed, that are doing work, that are doing incredible work with our neighbors throughout our community, but as part of this work, we need to do some evaluation. And as a result of that, we likely need to do some training and we need to do some redeployment. This is where the Built for Zero framework will be incredibly helpful in this work when we're talking about the by-name registry, when we're talking about data improvement, when we're talking about things like case conferencing, where we're understanding the individual needs of those who are experiencing homelessness, and we have that robust data set to be able to work with. That's all that is sort of part of this multidisciplinary outreach team. Then you have the One-Stop Homeless Resource Center. That's what we're here to talk about this evening, the pilot that launched today, and will go through October 31st, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. Barry is going to spend the majority of our time on that. The Safe Rest Shelter, an extreme weather site. We recognize the importance of having a site or a shelter beyond Topeka Rescue Mission. That's certainly one of the priorities of Topeka Jump. It's definitely one of our priorities, and the importance of having an alternative site where folks are able to get off the streets and are able to be connected with services. Then we have the Housing Continuum, and we recognize that we have the establishment of a permanent tiny home village as one of our priorities, but really, this housing continuum is a much more robust project. We are talking about supportive housing throughout the continuum. We're talking about transitional housing for individuals moving from the streets to eventually to their forever home. We're talking about workforce development, housing for folks who may be moving into the workforce many for the first time in many years. We're talking about this permanent supportive tiny home village, notice not just the development, but developments across the community. And then ultimately, attainable, supportive, permanent housing complex. We recognize that there are going to be some individuals who are going to need support throughout their entire lives. We're going to have individuals that we are serving, and we recognize who are not going to be able to enter the workforce for any number of different reasons and are going to need ongoing support throughout their lives. And so having a complex, having a place where they are able to continue to live in community with one another is going to be key. And so over the last several months, we, the coaches and I, the strategic development team, and the various sectors that are represented in this coalition have been working to flesh this out. The community engagement sessions that we held in the winter and spring and that were now kicked off again, where we've received feedback from the community, have sort of brought us to this place where we have put together this housing and homeless solutions network to sort of better understand what we need in the community in order to be able to move forward. So I mentioned that we were going to talk about the One-Stop Homeless Resource Center. We kicked off that pilot today, and I'm going to hand it off to Barry to talk about that work.
Thank you, Brett. This issue is very complex, and what we're trying to do is dive into the complexity of it. So that last chart that you saw is a lot of moving parts. Over a period of time and years, we believe that those are essentials. But coming back to something a little more simple on the front end, what can we do now? So we're really excited. Today, we did kick off the one-stop shop as a pilot that goes from today to the end of October with the Let's Help organization. We've been working on this for a bit of time with what we call the Mobile Access Partnership. I think most everybody's familiar with that. There is a brochure in front of you that talks about the Mobile Access Partnership. The primary partners are on the front of this brochure, but there are 17 unique partner agencies and many, many different volunteers that are a part of this. What we have known for a period of time is that a one-stop shop may take us to that next level with our unsheltered because they have a dependable place they can go to each time. The Mobile Access Partnership was kicked off during the pandemic because Topeka Rescue Mission had to get smaller quick because of social distancing and concerns about COVID. And so we began to take steps to take services out in the streets. That was four years ago. We've learned a lot in that amount of time about what is best and what's not best. And so today was absolutely a wonderful day. We had people that found out where we are, the gratitude that we saw there, the volunteers, the agencies, just it was a very positive experience, and we're really thankful for Let's Help, and we are now looking at, can we stay there? So again, this is a pilot project. What happens if we don't stay there? Come October, the end of October, we have to go indoor somewhere, and so because the outdoor units like the Vallejo shower trailer can't be outdoors in the cold weather. So the last three years, we've been at the Salvation Army. They did indicate that we could come back there if this doesn't work. However, there is a greater amount of space and opportunity for us to do what we need to do at Let's Help. So what is the one-stop shop? This is just a real quick overview. It's mental health services, financial services, employment services, life skills, shelter and housing services to get people moved into the right places, and then the basic needs, the shower, the food, the different things that people need, the supplies. What we've been doing now for four years out in the streets has worked really well. What happened today is that one in particular individual who has not been able to connect with services was immediately able because Vallejo is with us and they're starting intakes at MAP. We were able to go indoors. This person for months has not been successful. He got his intake done today, and he's on his way to moving through. Another individual came up to me right when I got there. He's been unsheltered for a long time. He is off his meds. He's a great guy. He is very, very noticeably troubled with his physical abilities. Threw his arms around me, gave me a big hug, and he says, "Thank you so much for this. When are we going to get the tiny homes?" And so I said, "Well, that's down the road a bit." And he says, "I don't want to be on the streets anymore." He said, "I'm ready to get off." But having this secure place to go that they know that they can be at is huge. And so again, I mentioned that Mobile Access Partnership, four years, we had an anniversary in May on this. 2,000, at that time, 2,000 unique individuals have been helped through this in one way or another in our community. That's different individuals, not a repeat. And so we are very excited to be able to continue to move that forward, and we have a lot of questions that need to be answered in regards to being able to stay at Let's Help and some other things to get people to the facility that we'll talk about if you have questions tonight or anything else. So one of the things that we're excited about is partnering with Impact Avenue. Carrie Higgins with the city is going to talk to you tonight about Impact Avenue.
So Impact Avenue is our program that works with unsheltered children and their families. We have over 40 different partner agencies, and during the school year, we meet one day a week for two hours and have a small one-stop shop. So we are super excited. On August 21st, we will be joining MAP at Let's Help, which will allow us to not only expand the one-stop as we merge with MAP, but also allow us to take those services and wraparound support to not only unsheltered children and their families, but to a larger scale, really, anyone that needs assistance.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. So we wanted to keep it brief tonight. The goal is to end chronic homelessness by 2030. Is that possible? Question is, do we want to do it? Yes, we do. Do we believe we can? Yeah, we think we can. And then the question is, what's it going to take, and are we willing to do it? And so tonight, we just wanted to give you an update and see if there's any questions that you have for us about where we are now and where we need to go.
Thank you, gentlemen. I have questions. Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I continue to be extremely impressed with the effort that you, everyone, all the partners put together when it comes to homeless in our community. I don't know if I've gone to any other place that is putting such a work in the background ahead before you start doing the big things. We've already got a lot done before we really roll out this entire thing, because there's a lot of thought put to it, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're preventing poor performance, and so I see that. I am curious on the timeframe from July to October for the Let's Help. You know, what is it that we can do to help make that trial period extend out if we already see the benefits of being indoors like that at a building of that size?
Thank you for asking. Again, we set the trial period knowing that if this doesn't work out, we need to make other plans for the winter. And so we are again hoping that this is going to work. There are some factors that we're looking at right now. One is that we have to have indoor showers. And so we are looking at those, where would those go? We actually have an architectural firm looking at that right now, has worked with some construction folks to give us some preliminary understanding of how we can put those showers indoors. If we don't have showers, we have to leave. And so we have a short amount of time to be able to acquire the necessary resources, get construction started. We do have locations in the building that will work. We just need to get that going. Another thing is that this puts a greater burden on Let's Help in regards to the services that they are currently providing. Let's Help will need additional resources as well. Can't speak for them tonight on that, but we know that extra meals, extra utilities, they're going to be, they've been Monday, Wednesday, and Friday serving meals. We've asked them to do two more days a week. Topeka Rescue Mission is providing the breakfast through the pilot, and we'll see what happens after that, but Let's Help is providing food, clothes, food, a lot of different resources. And then one last thing that we're looking at extensively is that there are certain individuals that can't make it to Let's Help. This has been a common situation where in the beginning of the Mobile Access Partnership, we provided transportation from homeless areas to the mobile sites. We had to stop that due to resources. And so we've been able to budget what it would look like for a two-day-a-week shuttle that would go to various locations in the community and bring our individuals with us, to us. One of the biggest drawbacks at this point, even though we've been able to provide some bus tickets to folks, is those with larger animals that cannot ride the bus. And so we have a number of our unsheltered homeless that take advantage of Mobile Access Partnership if they can get their pets there. We have an organization that is doing incredible work called Street Dog Coalition that is led by volunteers and veterinarians in our community, as well as Kansas State University School of Veterinary Program, that joins us every other week to be able to bring that. We need to find a way to be able to transport them, and right now on metro, that's not possible with the larger animals. So those are some of the basic things that we have to get in place between now, before the end of October, in order to make this work. Anything else?
Thank you, Governor. Councilman Hiller?
Mayor, thank you so much for this work, and I had my one-on-one beforehand, so I got a little briefing, and I think that this flow chart is, you can find pretty much everything there, and good for you. Two questions, and we talked about them, but I want you to talk about it here, I think. One, are all the agencies expected to be onsite all the time, or how does that work for connecting people to the services that they need through the one-stop?
Great question. Not every agency will be necessary over time, nor is it practical. All these agencies that are participating with us are funding their own way, and so they are taking away from what they might do where they are in order to do it at a site. So not everything is always needed every time. The biggest trick of this is going to coordinate all that. That's why we have a Jenny Falk and a Carrie Higgins, who are really good at that kind of stuff. And so, and they're doing a tremendous job of that right now. I believe, and Carrie could speak for this, I think there's close to 40 partners with Impact Avenue, 17 partners with Mobile Access Partnership, and combining some of those efforts together. An example was what happened today with Vallejo being onsite to be able to help that individual move forward.
Thank you for that one. Another question was, you know, we know that people in this community want to see things taken care of, A, so that the homeless camps and the negative parts of that go away, but also because they care an awful lot. And often, people know somebody who's kind of hiding out in the woods behind their neighborhood or their block, or run into someone. If someone discovers a homeless person that they may or may not have established a relationship with, but that they want to get connected for help, who do they call?
Another great question. I would say that we don't have the system down like we need to have it down in our community at this time, where there's a one place to call. Topeka Rescue Mission has a number, Police Department has a number, Vallejo has a number. So we have to look at those, and part of the Built for Zero, I think, will help address some of that, which I think you are some degree familiar with, the by-name list, where we're going to try to get a better coordination on this, and that's where I think one of the things the city can help us to do is resource that for a neighbor who says, "Who do I talk to?", to get everybody coordinated on the same page.
And if I can hitchhike one more short question, Mayor. If there's a group of, you know, friends that have coffee together, or a church group, or somebody else that wants to help with money or to help with money or time, who do they call?
They can call one of two places right now in this particular effort. One would be Let's Help, which is again, our host, that is doing some amazing things there already to be able to see how they can help with Let's Help. The Compassion Strategies is a very small organization, doesn't have a phone number, but has a website. And so they can go to the website. It's on the brochure here, the Facebook, and also the direct link to be able to offer help to either volunteer or possibly financially help out.
Thank you. Because I think people do want to connect and sometimes it doesn't happen just because you don't know where to go.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very, and the rest of the team for bringing this certainly to our community. I too am extremely excited about the possibilities of the whole project. Because I remember that first day when we met and started putting steps together. And I said to myself, "How are we going to put all of this into a package that we can deliver to the public?" And so far, things have started to shape up. I have only one question. What do we do? How do we help someone that rejects the service? What do we do? Because we know they're going to need it. And there may be some that just plain out rejects the help.
That's what we found to answer that question. And thank you for your compliment. It is a great community effort. I want to thank Brett and everybody that's been working along. He's led this effort to get this communication going. So what if somebody rejects the service? Do we then say, "Okay, we're done with them," or do we keep going back? Around the country, and also our experiences here, is you never give up. You never give up on somebody because there's a reason they're rejecting the service. National Research has said that it takes about seventy positive interactions with a chronically homeless individual for them to accept services. That's on an average. What does that mean? Seventy positive interactions. And you might get to number sixty and make a mistake and you might have to start over again. And so the different outreach teams that I've been working with around the country, some closer than even here, or as close as Topeka's over in Lawrence, they've really got a handle on this now with their, what they call the Homeless Response Team. And they use a lot of peer mentors. People have been there. They've come through the systems. They're employed now. They have housing now. They go out on the streets. And we have some of that here as well. But I always ask them, when I engage with them, what if somebody says no? What if somebody says, "I don't need that," or "I don't want that"? Do you then go on to the next person? They said, "Yeah, we'll be back the next day to that person or that week to let them know that we care." And that's one of the things that's made the difference of why we have people coming to Mobile Access Partnership now, why we've had the success over the years, is our outreach teams didn't give up. And so there's a reason why somebody says no. We need to find out why and see if we can maybe remove some barriers. And one of the biggest ones is trust and building that trust.
Thank you, Ellen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer?
This is kind of two-pronged. I want to know what the hours are. So if somebody wants to go and check it out, I personally want to see it at some point. So when is somebody there that you can go visit?
So at the, what we call the Mobile Access Partnership, which is not mobile right now, it's in the building, is Tuesday, Thursday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. This morning, we had people there around 6:30 AM waiting to start. And so people ready to go. But that's the official hours when we ask all of our different agencies to be with us.
Okay.
Our hope is to go more days of the week. It's necessary, but we want to walk before we run.
Thank you.
I want to say that I appreciated the tour that I was given this morning. I am really impressed with the, it's the organization that I saw. I mean, how everything is scheduled. They know what the next step is. Everybody seems to know where they need to go next in the facility. And it's laid out to be welcoming and friendly. And it is extremely clean and inviting. So when I got there, there were a number of people at the different doors that I was trying to use to get in. But they were all, like they were taking advantage of the things that were there, interacting with each other. So my compliments, you're off to a good start. As has been said, if there's anyone in the community who feels that they want help in some way, volunteer hours, contributions. I know I was taken to the clothing bank there too. And that was a spotless place. I mean, it really was impressive. And for people who sometimes wonder where they need to donate their clothes, that they have outgrown or out of style, not, you won't get any of Councilman Banks' stuff because it can be hard to fit people that tall. And he's always in style.
Trust me, we can use some of that too.
But I know myself, I've gone to different locations. But that is a perfect setup the way you have it, that they take it in, they clean it, they get it back to them as quickly as possible. I know that there's an extra need for some of the male clothing because they wear out quicker, as I was told. But no, it was an impressive operation. And especially that large cafeteria that you have, that you'll use for a warming center.
Yes.
That's a huge area. And again, like I said, it smelled like Lysol in there. I mean, it was so clean. It was just spick and span. And all the volunteers were very welcoming. So my hat's off to all of you for all the work that you do. And I'm so glad that we have somebody like Carrie to help you and have the city's hand in everything that gets going. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank councilmembers. Thank you, manager.
Okay, Madam Kirk, I think we're at the consent agenda.
Okay. Item A is an approval of a professional services contract between the City of Topeka and Alliant Insurance Services, Inc., for providing insurance brokerage, risk management consulting, and other related services. B are the minutes of the regular meeting of July 1st, 2025. And we have one application and staff is recommending approval.
Okay. I've heard the consent agenda is read. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Duncan, second by Councilman Banks. We're ready to vote.
And Councilmember Valdivia Ocla, what will your vote be?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. When you're ready, Madam Kirk. Action items.
A is a public hearing on the advisability of the de-annexation of a certain portion of a right-of-way in the area of Northwest 25th Street and Northwest Button Road, City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas, and an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Imprez de annexing a certain tract to plan within the City of Topeka, Kansas pursuant to KSA 12504B.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body. Dan Warner, our Division Director of Planning, will lead us to this item.
Okay.
Mayor, governing body, this item was a discussion item last week. And just to summarize, the election office asked about de-annexing a portion of Northwest 25th Street, the right-of-way, in order to take these two properties that are now in a very specific voting precinct and put them in a much larger one. So there's no voting issue, voting privacy issues. So again, de-annexing a portion of right-of-way on Northwest 25th Street. Staff is supportive of that action. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dan? Okay. At this time, this requires an announcement of a public hearing. So I have to read this three times, so bear with me. I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak on this matter. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? And for the third time, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Now, I ask the governing body if they have any questions before we move forward on this item. None? Is there a motion? Okay. Motion to approve by Councilman Duncan, second by Councilman Dobler. We're ready to vote.
Okay. Councilmember Valdivia Ocla, what will your vote be?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Action item B. Madam Kirk?
B is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers David Banks, Sylvia Ortiz, and Neil Dobler, amending the 2025 to 2034 CIP and the 2025 to 2027 CIB to add project number 900800 for Topeka Zoo Fiber Relocation.
Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, I'll take this one, actually. This project is to relocate the city's fiber optic cable that runs through Gage Park, literally through the middle of the zoo. Our intent is to run that fiber around the perimeter of the zoo. The zoo currently is not, the city is not currently providing fiber service to the zoo. It is contracted with third parties. And so it really does not make sense to have our fiber running through, in some cases actually through exhibits with dangerous animals. So the general rule is that the entity requesting to relocate our facilities would have to bear the cost of that. We estimate this cost to be $150,000. For that reason, I actually went a couple of different times to the Gage Park Improvement Authority and asked if they would be willing to provide funding to relocate this, as the zoo is a member of that and we do provide fiber to the county facilities. And as part of this project, we will be running a new fiber leg over to where the future community center is going by Carisaw. I'm happy to report that GPIA did agree to reimburse us for the cost of this. The intent would be for the city to contract with it, design, relocate the fiber, and then seek reimbursement from Gage Park Improvement Authority. Gladly stand for any questions that you would have.
Questions from the body? Seeing none, I see a motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, a second by Councilman Banks. Ready to vote?
And Councilmember Valdivia Ocla?
Yes.
Okay, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Action item C. Madam Kirk?
C is a discussion with possible action of an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Imprez concerning dangerous dogs, amending section 6.15170 of the Topeka Municipal Code, and repealing original sections.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body. I'll defer this to Amanda Stanley, our city attorney.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, we have our Chief of Prosecution, Kelly Tressel, and our Head of Animal Control, Officer Bowers, here today to talk about the need for these ordinances. Both of these came out of the Public Health and Safety Committee. We're going to talk about the next two agenda items together, if that's okay with you, so that we can just talk about both ordinances at the same time. Rather, since they're all dealing with dogs and they're all dealing with fawns, and we're going to walk through them. With that, I will turn it over to the two subject matter experts.
I'd like to thank the governing body for entertaining both of these ordinance amendments. They're very important to both the animal control, to the shelter, and also to the legal department in being able to prosecute these ordinances efficiently. In talking about the dangerous dog ordinance, there's two proposed amendments, and they may seem small, but in action, they will make a huge difference. The first proposed amendment is within A2. And so currently, when a dog is deemed dangerous, they can be returned back to their owner at the discretion of the court. But then they have to comply with dangerous dog conditions. They only have fifteen days in order to make that compliance. And that's fine, as long as the dog's fixed. There is, it's actually 100% impossible in the City of Topeka to make an appointment with a vet and have a dog fixed within fifteen days. So what would happen is that dog would be euthanized. So what we're proposing is to allow the judge to hear any good faith reasons as to why they can extend that deadline past that fifteen days. And that, that's why we're asking for that, in order to actually have less dogs euthanized. And the second proposed amendment is within B. And what we're seeing, and you'll hear a lot about in this presentation, are really long dog holds, very extended dog holds. Some of them are months, some of them even many years. And currently, with the dangerous dog ordinance, upon the first failure to, to the first appearance, if they fail to appear, they release the dog to Helping Hands. But if they don't, if they appear for the first time and then don't appear any other time, there's no consequence. And so they go out on warrant. And then they come back, and then they go out on warrant, and then they come back. Or they stay out on warrant for two years. And that's what's happening. And we're seeing a bigger trend in that because people who have been through the process before know that there won't be a consequence if they don't appear to their animal if it's past the first appearance. So we're proposing, upon any failure to appear, that dog gets released to Helping Hands, so that we're not having these extended holds. Currently, our worst example of this situation and a dangerous dog is a dog that's been in custody since November of 2023. And these dogs are not allowed outside. They're not allowed walks. They're caged. And they just sit there. And that's what's happening to that particular dog. There's other dogs like that one that aren't very far behind them in time. And it's very detrimental to the dogs. And so we would ask that, upon any failure to appear, that the defendant is accepting that they are releasing that animal. And I can have the animal control tell us why it's so important to not have these dogs in these cages.
You will see it in my presentation as well for the next topic. But we see a lot of anxiousness, even in felines. They, they can tend to overgroom. So it doesn't, it's not just about dogs. It's about cats as well that, you know, can be on cruelty holds and dangerous holds, not dangerous holds, but they get put on hold. Very anxious. They can start pacing, circling, licking paws, injuring themselves. Their immune system can go down to the point where they can be susceptible to illnesses, you know, like kennel cough, you know, all those kind of things. So it's, there's a lot that can go into just mentally with not being able to get a lot of enrichment, time like that. I will point out also in the other, I guess I was unprepared because it was going to be in my other presentation. But for court holds, there's only two teams that are able to take care of them at Helping Hands right now, just because of training and because they are technically evidence in that sense. So it takes a toll on them as well. There's, you know, they need certain people to take care of them.
So are there any questions as to the dangerous dog ordinance? And then we can move to the cruelty?
Questions from the body? Councilman Miller?
Thank you very much for your, and thank you, Mayor. I thank you very much for the presentation on that, or my presentation, I'm sorry. Discussion on that. My question, just for myself and the public, what makes a dog dangerous?
So it's a variety of things. It doesn't necessarily mean there's been a bite. Dangerous dog is defined within our ordinance as any dog that is acting aggressively without any reason. So it's not in defense of their owner. It's not in defense of their property. It's not in defense of their offspring. It's unprovoked. It can act aggressively. So someone walking down the street and the dog chasing after them and snarling could be deemed dangerous, depending on the factual circumstance. Death of a domestic animal, so a cat or another pet that, you know, a neighbor's, a neighbor's pet that has been attacked and bitten by that dog, that would be deemed dangerous. And then obviously, attack on a human that is unprovoked would also be deemed dangerous. That doesn't mean that these dogs always get euthanized. And there's kind of a misconception, I think, in the community that that's what is always happening. What we're trying to do is consider the dog's history, the facts of the case on a case-by-case basis, and whether this owner can be basis, and whether this owner can be responsible to comply with the dangerous dog conditions, which would require chipping, it requires muzzling when they're out on walks, it requires no longer than a four-foot leash, and it also requires a six-sided enclosure at all times. That can be their house, when they're indoors, or if they're going to be outside, it's a six-sided enclosure pin where it's got a floor and a top, so they can't escape and get out into the public. And then obviously, the fixing requirement of spaying or neutering. So those are the requirements, if they can meet those requirements, and we also turn to animal control for their opinion as to whether, because they will go and visit the site, they'll work with the owners, and they'll help us give an opinion to the court as to whether or not these dogs should be returned. And upon a second conviction, there's no more chances. But the first conviction, very often, more than not, they're returned, but we have to allow them time to comply with these conditions, and we just can't do it if that, if that dog is not fixed.
Thank you for that answer. I think it's incredibly important that people, as we change ordinances and we change these things, that people know what the actual, there's an explanation, there's an education piece of this, so it's not just, hey, here's what you don't do, here's why you don't do it. So I appreciate the thorough answer right there. Thank you.
Further questions?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further, if there's no further questions, the reason I asked for these to kind of become together is they both play on each other, so the second one deals with bonding, and I will turn it over for the presentation on that.
All right. So, yes, the bonding is going to come under the cruelty amendment, and so that's different than what we're talking about with the dangerous dog ordinance. There, currently in Kansas, under the state law, there is a bond system in place for cruelty. In other words, the costs of the care and boarding of those animals as they're being held while they're out pending the adjudication in court on the cruelty cases, the defendant has to come in and within the first 21 days, pay a bond that's worth 30 days of board and medical care costs for that animal. If they don't by day 21, that animal is released. And it's a renewable every 30 days. So they do it the first time, great, we'll hold the animal for them, those costs are prepaid. And then, if they come in and renew it, they get another 30 days, and so on, until they have adjudicated their case. And really, that's up to them on timing. Whether they want a trial, we can speed that up. If they want to keep continuing in order to do other things, that's up to them too, but they have to continue to pay for these costs and care for, for this. And so, this 21-day bond idea that, that Officer Bowers is going to explain in more detail and what that helps us with, is actually a mirror image of Kansas state law, and multiple cities do have this. I know Kansas City does, I know Lawrence does, I know Pittsburgh does. We didn't go over the entire state, but we did make sure that there were other cities that are also doing this, and it simply mirrors the Kansas state law. And so, the other, so I'll go ahead and let you explain why this is so important on multiple levels, is to have a 21-day bond.
So, you can also, it, it's also the cost of care, and I also want to point out, when we had the Humane Society of America here in the United States, they changed their name now, but they wanted to know if we had a cost of care when we were dealing with the house on Fillmore. And I know that that really changed things when we were trying to bring them in to work with them, because a lot of other places implement this so much, that it was hard for them, just for the fact that if we didn't get the dog surrendered, they didn't know what they would do. So it is very popular, a lot of cities do it all across America, so, I don't know how to use this quicker, I'm sorry.
Just click on the screen.
Okay. Perfect. So just a presentation overview, it's why the amendment is needed, affects the prolonged kennel confinement, and financial impact, and just also to show our increase of animal calls. So, I'm going to go over in the other slide, so I won't, you know, go on every detail here, but this prevents long-term kennel stays. Again, we are taking up 25% of Helping Hands kennel space, they are holding for our whole dogs, so we are taking up a lot of space, and I know, I'm sure everybody's seen on the news, they are filled, they're, they do not have any kennel space left, and we are running into a lot bigger cases, so we are unfortunately taking up 25% of their kennel space. Again, like I said earlier, there's only two teams that are trained to work and that have the qualifications to work with the court holds, and if we're taking up 25% of the kennel space, I, I can only imagine that they're taking, you know, that's taking a toll on their staff. So, that is one thing I want to put in, that it is very mentally taxing on the animals, but it is mentally taxing on Helping Hands as well. Longer stays result, like I said, in stress, anxiety, which decreases the chance of getting adopted. Increased animal calls, I'll go over that a little bit as well, but our calls are steadily increasing, and with that, you know, we'll have more calls where we're going to need to put dogs on hold. Cost reduces the amount of money the city, the city of Topeka is spending, so cost of care has gone up, just because of inflation, our, our contract with Helping Hands, we are spending more daily, which is just normal with, you know, the prices that's going up. Vaccines are going up, all sorts, you know, the boarding. And also ensures accountability to the owner, shifting the responsibility to the owner. We always explain, hey, you are going to be charged if found guilty for this violation, and it just doesn't hit them until they're in court, and they hear they owe a lot of money because the dog's been on hold, or the cat, longer animal control response times. I want to point out that when these animals are on hold, we have to transport them to our vet, and with construction, however, it's about 20 minutes, and we don't know if they're going to stay there and be hospitalized, but we have to take them to the vet and we have to bring them back. So, I just want to point out that that's going to be less time on the street, less time for us to patrol. So again, I, increased anxiety, and I'll point to the other slide, because it is, we had a dog that was on hold for 87 days, but we had to spend almost $1,000 in medication because he was so anxious in the, in the kennel. So, self-licking, excessive grooming, pacing, circling, panting excessively, again, lowered immune system, kennel cough, upper respiratory in cats. A lot of dogs unfortunately do get kennel cough when they go into Helping Hands, a lot we don't know are vaccinated, they vaccinate when they get in to Helping Hands, but that doesn't always deter them getting kennel cough. So a lot of times, we are spending money, so it doesn't increase in, you know, a more, more situation. I think a little bit of it got messed up, my apologies, but signs of depression, failure to thrive, that happens a lot in cats, they, they can get anorexia, it's a point where they just don't want to eat, their changing habits are different, so that's pretty popular in felines, so. And then canine post-traumatic stress disorder, dangerous dog, and with our cruelty, they have been through a lot. There's, there's reasons, and keeping them confined in that kennel does not make it any better. At the end of the day, all the above factors hinder the chance of them being adopted. So the more they are, are at Helping Hands, is, even though they do great work, it's just depleting their percentage of being able to be adopted, to be out in homes, which is a big, big concern, especially when they're staying for 700 days, 500 days, 239 days. These are, these are real examples, so. So, financial impact, so for the five-year boarding cost alone, this is not medical care, we have spent altogether $251,323. I calculated it, and so if we did the 21-day bond, 30 days, it would have been $94,251. So, that would be saving the city $157,072.32. Now, again, this is not with medical, and I really want to point out that with inflation, medical is way more than, than what I was even able to calculate. But I did, I tried to calculate as much as I can with the last two years, but again, every animal under court hold is our responsibility of the city until they are released, which means if they are sick, if they need x-rays, if something breaks, like they get their foot caught or something, we have to pay for that until we go into court, we go to court, and they have a verdict. So the last two years, impartial 2025, around $25,072.70 has been spent on medical bills alone, and I tried my hardest to calculate, because we're going from two places, our city vet, and, you know, our vaccines, and some of the spot care they do at Helping Hands. It was kind of hard to get all that together, and I have all of it, just trying to get it, so it is more than this. This, I feel like, is a nice number. But the real-life example, we had a court hold from 9/13/2024 to 12/9/2024, 87 days, it is one of our lower cases, but I wanted to point out that because of medical care and medication, we added on $966. So, you know, if the dog was there for the 30 days, that would have dropped drastically, and we have many, many of these cases. We have animals, again, that have stayed there for 300 days, but hasn't really needed a lot of medical care, and then we have some that have stayed there for a few months like this, and they're still racking up, so we have a lot of cases, and we've had 385 dogs on hold the last five years. And a lot of those stayed really a very long amount of time. Actually, like 30% in 2023 was over, was over 30 days of stay. So. And I also wanted to just touch on our increased animal calls, just because it is steadily going up. I feel like, from what I'm seeing, our population is staying the same, but our animal calls are becoming a little bit more serious, we have inflation, it is a lot harder, and we hear that a lot, we try to work with families, but a lot can't afford the medical care. So we are having a lot of hoarding cases, where they unfortunately take a lot of animals. We've seen about four hoarding cases just in the last year. Luckily, they've all kind of panned out to where they were surrendered, but I know one day, that's not going to happen, and we might have to put, and again, we did have to put 15 animals on hold from a van, which took up more space at Helping Hands. And then, just because of the higher cost of living, we are seeing a lot more animals multiplying, therefore, we, we are having more animal calls. So, that concludes my presentation. If anybody has questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Kelly, can you tell me, is there anything additionally to the, in addition to these ordinance changes and all of that, are there any tougher methods or ordinances that we can create that maybe other municipalities do to help lessen the amount of irresponsible owners? I know that's a huge, that's an absolutely huge question, but I'm just talking about in Oakland alone, because of the Facebook page they have, there, there is such a large amount of dogs that you can just tell people cannot afford, right? They're usually big dogs, and they don't have the fences for them, they don't have the running space for them, they don't have, you know, they can't afford the medical care, and having a pet is expensive. That's, I mean, that's the bottom line. Is there anything somewhere, you know, somewhere down the road where we can be even more proactive? Because we see what the costs are, we see how we're changing, you know, wanting to change up the ordinances, we see how we are taking up, the city is taking up the responsibility for these animals, and it's no fault of the animal that the owners cannot or will not oblige by, we see the rates of calls increasing, and, I mean, is, is there anything that you can, like, maybe research down the road that cities are doing to even get more impossible? I'm not, I don't want to use the word restrictive, but just have more accountability, so, so that this doesn't even happen in the first place? Like, maybe some kind of barrier where people aren't even getting the dogs that they can't afford to take care of?
Yeah, and I think part of that is just going to be, we, most of these dogs are, are given even private sales or private gifts, or they're adopted by, by the shelter, we don't have any control over that. But I can tell you that, just in a brief overview of what I've looked at so far, there are ordinances out there that don't allow the cruelty animals to be returned. They go to adoption, and I think you can speak to that as well, but as far as being more restrictive, there are ordinances out there that are more restrictive. Ours are more geared at the moment to trying to give good owners back their animals, and that may be in a matter of education, it may be a matter of finances, but ultimately, with these cruelty cases, if it's a matter of finances, they're not going to pay the bond, they're also not going to pay the bill if we don't have the bond. And that's part of the issue. We'll end up with a case where it's over a year old, the defendant finally decides to go over to the shelter and sign the one piece of paper that surrenders the animal, but they have a year's worth of fees, and then they get convicted ultimately, that does go to them, it's assessed to them at sentencing, and then it goes to collections, and we never see any of it, but the city had to foot that bill. And so, that, the bond definitely takes care of the financial side of this, but looking at how to, if, if, if the governing body wants to change the, the direction that we're going in being more restrictive with animals, then that's something that we can certainly look into, but that's not what we're doing with these particular ordinances. If you had anything to add?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, you can go.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to say that the people that we are having to charge for animal cruelty, we educate and we give them ample amount of time to figure out what we're doing, and we also give resources. And I also want to say, we keep in communication with Helping Hands daily, and we do talk to them about if this is just not a house that should be housing animals, and they also, you know, contact us at times, like, hey, have you guys had problems with, you know, this house before? So we definitely, there's been times where we've had to put, you know, houses on the do-not-adopt list, so that is something that we do communicate about.
Well, I, I definitely think, you know, that's good, and, and I am just saying, and Kelly, you and I can continue this conversation later about looking more into that, because, again, I'm looking at it from the view of, you know, loose dogs, dogs that continuously jump fences, dogs that may stay out too long, even though, you know, we have a tethering ordinance, dogs that end up biting, because, you know, the, they're either loose, or they think that the parks are open territory to, you know, let the dogs run loose, the, the dogs are aggressive with children in, in parks when they're let loose, and so they're not let out to play, you know, it's just any number of things. And to me, you know, that all boils down to a serious lack of responsibility for what it means to have an animal in a neighborhood, you know, where, where there are, there's so much, you know, foot traffic. So, you know, thank you for the presentation, but Kelly, I'll, I'll visit with you this, you know, with this on the, on the side afterwards, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, just saw something you just said a second ago. You said something about the do-not-adopt list. Could you explain that a little bit, but also, is it just the houses that go on, or is it the owners as well that go on the do-not-adopt list?
So, it's just names, they're not really houses. So they obviously have, like, some of the information on the dogs that are on hold, so that's just what I meant by that, is we communicate with that. Yeah. Yeah.
Councilwoman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, on behalf of the Public Health and Safety Committee, thanks for your work on this, and I think you put it together well at committee level and here as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything further? As City Attorney, I want to just check with you here on this.
Yeah, because of the need with Helping Hands and the capacity issues, we did put this on as discussion slash possible action, so if you would like to take action on either of these ordinances or both tonight, you are happy to, otherwise, we will take them up for action next week.
Well, we've had the discussion, on item, action item C, is there a motion from the body? I see one now. A motion from Councilman Duncan to approve, and a second by Councilman Dobler, so we're ready.
Do we need to vote on each separate? Are they separate?
Yeah. Yeah. So, we're ready to vote on this particular ordinance.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right, we have eight yes, the motion carries.
Okay, with the discussion and the presentation that we had here on action item D, my screen keeps going off. Okay, I see a motion to approve action item D by Councilwoman. Okay, I see a motion to approve Action Item D by Councilwoman Hiller, second by Councilman Duncan. Is there, we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Valdivia Akala, what is your vote?
Yes.
Okay, we have eight yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Move to Action Item E. Madam Perk, when you're ready.
E is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez, providing notice that the city is considering establishing a reinvestment housing incentive district for LB Lots LLC, adopting a plan for the development of housing and public facilities in the proposed RHID, and establishing the date and time of a public hearing.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Man and Freeman, our Director of Planning and Development, will lead us through this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, governing body. So tonight, we're simply seeking the approval of a resolution to set a public hearing for LB Lots LLC for their application for the RHID reinvestment housing incentive district to be set for August twelfth, governing body meeting. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala.
Thank you. Just real quick, this isn't a question, this is a comment. I read the email that Danielle Tuendo sent as, that should be entered into the public comment record on this resolution, and there are a number of questions on there, and I am requesting that the City Attorney, just so the public can hear me say this, I'll be contacting you, City Attorney, because I want to go over this memo completely and get answers from either you or Assistant City Manager, Deputy City Manager, whoever, City Manager, Rihanna, before next Tuesday's meeting. There are a number of concerns that she has. I do not understand all the questions, but I want to, so I just want to make sure that I say that about this public comment, and then my goal would be to go over the answers in next Tuesday's meeting. So can I get some kind of acknowledgement that I can meet with the City Manager or City Attorney, whoever?
I'm happy to meet. I will need someone to forward me the email, because I do not have a copy.
I didn't, I didn't understand what you said.
I said I don't have a copy of that, but if somebody can send me the email, I'm happy to meet.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and this particular item is just to set a hearing date. So no action will be taken, other than to setting the date for August the twelfth. So I see a motion from Councilman Dobler. I'll second the motion.
There you go.
Oh, we're ready to vote. There you go. That's all right, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Valdivia Akala, what will your vote be?
On this scheduling of the hearing date, yes.
Okay. And Councilmember Ortiz? Okay, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Action Item F, Madam Perk.
F is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez, notifying the county clerk of, one, a proposed intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the Topeka Metro Transit Authority, two, the proposed tax rate, and, three, the date, time, and location of the public hearing to consider adopting a budget that exceeds the revenue neutral rate.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Josh McInnarny, Division Director of Budget and Finance, will lead us through this item.
Good evening, governing body. Kind of like Megan said, this resolution is setting the public hearing date for the TMTA. It's letting the county know that we're leaving the possibility of opening, exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Just for context, the revenue neutral rate for the metro is three point nine nine nine. This resolution is proposing a maximum mill levy rate of four point two, which is also their current mill rate in 2025. And then, yeah, and then the public hearing date is August twenty-sixth of this year. So that's, that's all we have for this item.
What's that date again, I guess what?
August twenty-sixth.
Okay. Madam City Attorney.
Yes, this is just setting the public hearing. Technically, the law requires a roll call vote when you actually approve revenue neutral rate. However, out of an abundance of caution, I would prefer a roll call vote on this particular item.
Okay.
Can you get a point of clarification, Mayor?
Yes.
We have a meeting August twenty-sixth? Did we move that because of election? Okay. Just checking. It'll be on my calendar now.
July?
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Banks. Now we're ready to vote.
Okay, and I will take a voice vote here. Okay. Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Hofer? All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Move on to Action Item G. Madam Perk.
G is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez, notifying the county clerk of, one, a proposed intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the City of Topeka's 2026 budget, two, the proposed tax rate, and, three, the date and time, location of the public hearing to consider adopting a budget that exceeds the revenue neutral rate.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Josh McInnarny, our Division Director of Budget and Finance, will lead us through this item.
Same, similar item to the last item, but this is just for the City of Topeka. The public hearing will be on the same night, August twenty-sixth, and then this is letting the county know that we are leaving the possibility of exceeding the revenue neutral rate still on the table. Our revenue neutral rate is thirty-five point one eight three. In this resolution, we'd be proposing a maximum mill levy rate of thirty-seven point nine five six. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that will be the mill levy rate introduced in the budget, but that's the maximum mill levy rate that we'd be, we'd be leaving ourselves open as an option for.
Thank you. Any questions? Josh, City Attorney, you want to do a?
Again, out of an abundance of caution, I would love a voice vote.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess here's my question, City Manager, and I alluded to this last week. We haven't seen the budget yet. I know, I'm sure it's a week or two away. I guess my question is, is that budget going to have, use the same mill rate that we are currently at, or will it have a different mill rate when it's presented to us?
So the proposed budget that we're developing assumes the current mill rate without any increase. Obviously, we've shared where we are at financially, I mean, since last year, we have projected a seventeen million dollar deficit, twenty-one million, seventeen million dollars in 2026, and twenty-one million dollar deficit in 2027. Obviously, we workshop that since, since last summer. You know, as we've been stating since the beginning of this year, I mean, to make the, to make a balanced budget for 2026, there's going to have to be consideration of reductions and/or continued freezing of positions or other revenue sources. As Josh alluded to, this gives us an option as we continue through the budget process, if it is the will of this body to look at a mill increase. This gives us the option to do so. However, back to your original question, I will tell you that what we are developing right now, does a further proposed budget not assume a mill increase?
So I guess I would just reiterate to everybody, I guess, here's, I mean, we know how this process works. We're going to submit this to the county. The county is going to send out the revenue neutral rate notices, which are going to have three lines. They're going to say, this is what revenue neutral would be, this is what the current mill rate is, would be, and then it says, because there's no nuances in those statements, this is what the City of Topeka is proposing. If we're not really proposing that, if that's not going to be in the budget, if our intention as a governing body is to use a budget that at worst leaves a flat mill rate, then I think it's going to create confusion among the public, because the perception when they get those notices is, we are raising the mill. And if everyone's okay with that, and ready to fight that perception, explain it to people, great. I think everyone's, my position has always been clear, but I'm never going to vote to raise the mill levy, and I'm not going to do it this year, and again, I know I'm one of ten. But so for me, if we're going to stick with that, it just seems like we're creating more confusion if we submit something that we're probably not going to do. So that's why I will be voting against this. So, thank you, Mayor.
Free to comment, discussion. Okay, Councilwoman Hiller.
Just a question. It used to be that the standard for the city and the county was to set, you know, before they went into the final budget, to set a couple mills up, so that there was, and it was, so there was room if anybody wanted to. I mean, the city, this, I've been on this council for a while, has only raised taxes once in sixteen years, so I think that's pretty good. But that was a routine. But I don't recall that there was a notice sent to the taxpayers. Is that what's happening now with this revenue neutral legislation?
Well, this has been the law since 2021, so we've been sending this every year. We get assigned a revenue neutral rate from the county. That is based off the actual tax dollars that we spent last year, calculated into a mill levy. And if you are exceeding the revenue neutral rate, then there is a whole process that we have to follow. We've been doing that, again, for the last several years. That process involves step one, you have to pass a resolution that states what your maximum mill levy that you may levy is, and if it's going to exceed the revenue neutral rate, has to be sent to the county clerk by a particular date. If you miss that step, then you're stuck at the revenue neutral rate. Next step, the county clerk has to mail out a revenue neutral rate notice with all of the taxing entities. It's that bill you get that then goes all over Facebook, because everybody's confused about what it gets, because it's not a bill. And it's a notice that has the library in the watershed district and every taxing district that might apply to you, and it says all of the dates of the hearings that you can go to, it says what everyone's proposed rate is, what the revenue neutral rate is. If the county clerk misses that step for any reason, we all get frozen at our revenue neutral rate. So that's happened in other places from time to time. And then the next step is, we actually hold a public hearing on the revenue neutral rate. You have to vote at that public hearing. You cannot delay it. You have to vote before we close the public hearing about whether or not to exceed the revenue neutral rate, because that is good governance to make a decision right then. And then you will, after that, then hold a budget hearing, at which point you have to, again, vote on your budget hearing. All of these have to be published, and if you miss any of these steps, we potentially don't have a budget, but we also go back to the revenue neutral rate.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
All right, Mayor, I'm going to take my shot in the dark, and I'm going to move to adjust our request to our current mill rate of thirty-six point nine five six.
Hold on a second.
Can you repeat the motion?
The motion will be to adjust the mill levy rate to thirty-six point nine five six percent. That is the original rate, correct? Mill rate? I think that, as from what I'm understanding, he's?
To submit our current mill rate, as our cap for this year.
Yes, it would decrease what is written in the resolution in your agenda packet to the current.
Thirty-seven, thirty-six.
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody understand the motion? Okay. There's been a motion, and a second from Councilman Dobler, as I heard. You ready to vote?
I do need to amend, but I will need a motion on the voting board if I could have. Did you guys already make a motion on your tablets?
Well, Duncan made the motion.
To amend, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I didn't see it on the screen.
Okay. And then Dobler is second? Okay. Sorry, let me just amend it here.
Councilman Duncan? Did you have? Okay.
So we are both voting. We are voting on the motion as amended.
No, we're voting on the amendment.
Voting on the amendment. I apologize. Sorry, guys.
Move to change the number.
Would you like the clerk to read the motion?
Okay, the motion is to adjust to the thirty-six point nine five six percent of the mill levy rate, which is the original rate.
It's not a percentage, so just for clarity.
I'm sorry, guys.
The motion to, is to adjust the maximum mill rate proposed to the county clerk to the 2025 mill rate of, what was the 2020?
Thirty-six point nine five six.
Thirty-six point nine five six.
Thirty, yes, thirty-six point nine five six.
Okay. Thank you for your patience. I apologize, guys.
It's complicated.
Okay.
Want to get it right?
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and now we can vote.
Okay, motion and a second, and this is on that amendment.
Yes.
We're ready to vote.
And Councilmember Valdivia Akala, what is your vote? Okay, we have eight yes, the motion carries, with Councilmember Miller voting no.
Okay. Now we're back to the original?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we are back to the original.
Okay, you have a motion to approve by Councilman Duncan, second by Councilman Dobler. Ready to vote?
Okay, Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Hofer? Okay, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Move on to non-action items. Madam Perk.
A is a discussion regarding the removal of certain real properties from the Dynamic Core redevelopment district.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Amanda Stanley, our City Attorney, will lead us through this item.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This is an item that you see periodically throughout the year when we need to remove certain properties from the Dynamic Core Tiff District. If you recall, a tax incentive district uses your tax increment above a certain amount to fund certain tax incentives. Similarly, a neighborhood revitalization property also uses its tax rebate, that tax increment. Obviously, that can't go two places at once, so if a property is going to be in the NRP, it cannot also be in a Tiff District, because there is only one increment. Because of that, when someone does apply and is approved for NRP, we do have to take their properties out of the Tiff District that is overlaid in it. That's why, if you look at our NRP and our Dynamic Core District downtown, it was described in one time as like a starry night, and that is what it looks like, because you have random properties that are in the NRP instead of the Tiff District. This ordinance would remove seven different properties that are This ordinance would remove seven different properties that are identified that are eligible and have been approved for the NRP and need to be removed from the district. This ordinance is mandatory, you can't do both, so we believe that you could place it on the consent agenda next week if there are no objections.
Questions for City Attorney? No discussion? Councilwoman Hiller?
Just one comment because I have quite a few of the territories, particularly in the downtown Tiff, in my district. The NRP is so easy for everyone to use for a major rehab or an infill. We've talked from time to time about, and you can see it on here because it's a better deal, it's easier, and it is good a deal on the tax rebate as the more complicated, higher level incentives. So, we've talked about promoting it more and better to our residents that are in those districts. I just wanted to take the chance to piggyback on this one, to mention it, because it probably could be used more, and we are working so hard on looking at being able to get vacant properties reoccupied or vacant lots rebuilt. It's a great deal out there. All people have to do is apply for it when they go get their permits. It's that easy. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Nothing further. We'll move on to public comment. You have one individual signed up. Mr. Henry McClure.
Thank you, Your Honor. Henry McClure, Topeka, Kansas. Man, this town, if you got a sick dog, move to Topeka. But I'll tell you what's a sick dog, is that AT&amp;T building. It was a dog. It was a dog when you created that special tax zone around that, lowered the $2.2 million purchase, lowered down to $3,500 in property tax. The property was a dog until the government started, the government became the veterinarian. So, a salesman, we've got to keep trying to make a point. So, the analogy today is the dog, because the AT&amp;T building was a dog, but the owner came to the vet. You approved $9.5 million in a board meeting that nobody can go to. I made a core request for those meeting notes. I made a core request again for the lease, and here's what's crazy. The lease is, so, the building owner leases it to go Topeka, who I don't think is spending the money appropriately anyway. Charity here, charity there, doling out money right and left instead of putting it into roads. But you guys are under construction. You, because you're JettO, you're supervising that deal. You're a JettO vote, Your Honor, and you're under construction without a signed lease. You know what you told me? You just told me, it's an open checkbook. It doesn't matter. It just doesn't matter because the building owner and JettO, they're bigger than the people, and that deal is a dog for the voters. There isn't any reason, you, JettO has advocated all the power to go Topeka, and now you've put "go Topeka" in business. That is so wrong. You know, the hotel pointed out the pimple on the forehead to the community, but what you've done in the AT&amp;T building is 10 times worse than the hotel, and it's going to go on in perpetuity. Now, let's talk about Lawrence Bay. That dog has been in the cage for a decade, and it's still, the county didn't collect the tax, the city hasn't collected specials. Do you know that when the $3.1 million to redo that lake, you guys put specials on properties over here that were in arrears? They hadn't paid taxes in five years.
Happy Birthday!
It's not my birthday, it's still my 13th.
No, I'll get it right.
It's all right, Neil. Yeah, let's talk about the birthdays out in Lawrence Bay. A decade, that's a long time. We've got to create awareness of this. We've got an election year coming up, and we got to make some changes. At least I'm willing to try to make changes. That's why I'm running for mayor, so thank you.
All right, that's all we have for public account comment. Madam Clerk.
Firstly, we have the Topeka Development Corporation Board of Directors meeting that will be next week on July 15th from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. here in the city council chambers. On the agenda, we will have the approval of the July 1st 2025 meeting minutes, and then we will also have discussion on the potential terms of the sale of the hotel to a third party. Secondly, we have the governing body meeting on July 15th at 6:00 p.m. here in the city council chambers. On the consent agenda, we have two noise exceptions. We have an expenditure ordinance, the Dynamic Core Tiff District Ordinance. On the action items, we have a public hearing and ordinance establishing 30th and Topeka Tiff District, a public hearing for 30th and Topeka Boulevard Community Improvement District, and rezoning ordinance for Southeast 21st Street and Southeast Adams Street, another rezoning ordinance for Northwest Lyman Road and Northwest Vale Avenue. And then we have the resolution for the RHID policy amendment and an ordinance for Lawrence Bay CID project specials assessment. And then for non-action, we will have two discussions, one for the deferral of special assessments for land bank properties and the 2026 budget overview presentation. And that will be the beginning of that, and that is all that I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to take an opportunity to highlight great partnership with 501 School District and Basketball Camp that Assistant City Manager Moore, Chief Ayew, and I got to visit some middle schoolers today. Got to, stepped in, got to run a drill, and they all laughed at my six airballs that shot from the key. And now, Councilmember Ortiz was there. I'm just going to tell you that my back and my knees are hurting right now, so, so, yeah, but I just wanted to highlight that visit, and for those kids of you, or the kids who were there, I want you to remember that you all are leaders, that you'll be the future leaders of this community. And again, you guys have greatness in you, and so I just wanted to wish you all a great rest of the summer and then a great school year. And again, thanks for having us today. It was, I love you guys, and council's great, but that was the highlight of my day, so I appreciate you all. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Miller?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Councilwoman Hofer?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller? Councilwoman Valdivia Akla?
She's not online.
She's not? Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Attorney, I did remind the city manager about the, I tried to educate him on the work comp issues today. He did not have proper shoes on, and his form was terrible. He jumped in a drit, and the kids even tried to correct him. The bottom line is, he's just not coachable. That's just the bottom. And to be on a good basketball team, you have to be coachable, so I'm sure that's why he's mentioning his knees and his legs there, because it was a problem even before he shot the, I didn't know it was six, but six airballs. So, again, just make note of that, let the record reflect on that. I do want to thank, on a serious note, I do want to thank the city manager, the police chief, and Mr. Agri, and all those that have come out to the camp to see the kids, talk to the kids. This is one of the things that we do annually. This is our fifth year. Gibbs Lee has done a fabulous job of drawing the kids in and bringing them in, and then talking to them and letting them know that they are important, and we've reeled them in with basketball. I know one time I was asked by a community activist, what am I doing to help the youth? And this is one of the things that I do. I usually don't like to publicize it, but our sponsors are great, they know who they are, and we couldn't do this without them. We use no city funding, none whatsoever. Everybody is a volunteer, they do not get paid, including myself. So, again, I just wanted to thank everyone. We've got two more days, we've got two days down and two days to go. You're welcome, you're welcome to stop by, but you cannot file a work comp claim when the game does not go your way. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing. Thank you.
Okay. There is a need for an executive session this evening, but before we go into that session, I have one more announcement I'd like to make. First, on a positive note, Councilman, as a reminder, you probably all know this, but our city manager has passed his one-year mark with us here at the city as our city manager, and as appropriately, we have a gift for him to mark that day. There are a number of things in here that I think you would appreciate, and I'll leave it to you as to whether you want to reveal those items at this, but I want to congratulate you on your one-year with the city of Topeka. There is one thing in there, it's a one-year pin, so hopefully you can collect a number of those. But there's, there are a couple other items in here that I think you would appreciate, but...
Basketball shoes, though.
Yeah.
Point large, but named after you.
Probably some warriors.
Okay, thank you. My note taken. Jane, I'm assuming Jane gave the gummy bears, which are one of my favorites.
Yes, Jane has a lot to do with this.
And Punteclara Pralines.
Yeah.
Of Lepicon.
Another one, another gift from the Gulf Shores, which I had to...
My one-year pin, thank you. Appreciate it. And another city of Topeka vote, thank you. I know that last week was kind of, last week was just an interesting meeting, and I know there are a lot of things, but I just want to thank you all as a governing body. I know that we don't always agree on things, and that's okay, I think that's healthy, but I really do appreciate the opportunity to continue my tenure here and to the staff and to the team. I just, I couldn't do this without y'all, and I just appreciate you all. And again, to the community, thank you for entrusting this great responsibility upon me, and I just really appreciate it, and I'll continue to do my best to listen and to help us continue moving forward, and thank you all.
Congratulations. And at the risk of getting myself into trouble, I do want to make one more announcement. And I've hesitated about this because I didn't want to seem like I was working against the opportunity for people to have a public comment and come to this body and air their concerns, but it's increasingly obvious to me that people have forgotten the rules when you come to this podium and how you address this governing body. And one of the things you don't do is you don't campaign in this forum. There's, there are plenty of opportunities for people who are running for office to take up those opportunities to speak. This isn't a place for that. So, I ask everybody to review those restrictions when they sign up to come to this podium and respect the rules that are put in place for everyone. So, it's been difficult for me not to say something because I didn't want to look like I was putting a damper on free speech, but there are limits, and the rules are in place for a reason. If there's something that needs to be said about a campaign, it can be said somewhere else. So, I just wanted to make that announcement, that when you sign up, I ask the city clerk to make sure that those people who sign up acknowledge that they have read the rules and will abide by those rules when they appear before this body. There is a need for an executive session, and I'll ask the City Attorney to read, please.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 25 minutes to discuss employer-employee healthcare negotiations related to one or more unions as justified by KSA 754319B3. The meeting will resume in this room of the governing body chambers. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in deliberations, City Manager Perez and other staff he deems necessary.
Okay, motion has been made by Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Duncan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will recess.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We will recess, give it a quick five-minute break, and then we'll recess into executive session. We have completed our discussions in the executive session. No action has been taken. No further action coming before this body. The meeting is adjourned.